So meeting in Monday study session, it is Monday, July 10th, 2023. The time is about 11:33 AM. For everyone who's joining us and maybe has been waiting, apologies. The Rules and Operations Committee had a lot more business on it than normal. And so that is why this Monday study session is starting a little later than we anticipated. We appreciate your patience. Every member is present except for Councilmember Kruever, who is excused by Mr. Kimball.
And just to manage time, because I see we've got some pretty big agendas. We have a public safety at 1:30. Is that correct? So to allow for lunch, we want to make sure we get out of here by one.
If possible.
Okay.
Do you want to give people?
Some of our presentations. All right. With that, I'll be quiet.
Thank you. We do have a public safety committee meeting at 1:30 as you indicated. Let's get through. We can get through items two, three, and four pretty quickly and then get to other business. We have two important conversations with presenters scheduled today. So let's get through item two real briefly. Review of tomorrow's July 11th council meeting agenda. Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Please, please get straight to the substance.
Okay. Chairman and members of the council, Jeff Cox, council staff. You are now looking at your amended meeting agenda for July 11th, 3 o'clock. The meeting will be here in the council chambers at 9:30 to come in. So under ordinances, you have you have proposal 202324. This is in the consent agenda. And it's referring the ordinance of the council repealing ordinance 20235S and ordinance 202314 in response to a petition filed with Growth Management Hearings Board and consolidate the case 2330005C entitled Futurize Family Concerned Citizens. Angela Shick, Melody Atwood, Dan Atwood versus Pierce County had to come rescue mission in anticipation of settlement agreement and adopting findings of fact. It's for referral to Community Development Committee, saying a date of final council action of July 25. Next up, under the consent agenda, under item one, B1, you have proposal 202325. And this is an ordinance of the Pierce County Council relating to contracting indebtedness, providing for the issuance of not to exceed 51 million aggregate principal amount of limited tax general obligation bonds of the county for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of purchasing an office building for county governmental use, making certain improvements there to require fewer curricular fixtures, et cetera.
Please excuse me. The Mr. Cox, please excuse me.
I know we've got a packed agenda. Could we just get kind of summary of the items rather than a full reading? You bet. This is for referral to rules and operations with the final council hearing date of July 25. Under resolutions, you have 2023110, and that's authorizing the executive tender agreement with Gig Harbor for distribution park refunds. This is for referral to Community Development Committee, final counsel on July 25. Next, our 2023111, authorizing Pierce County Executive Executive Agreement with Peninsula Metropolitan Park District for distribution of REIT funds. Again, referral to development, Community Development Committee, final counsel hearing July 25. Next, a final resolution of the council authorizing the executive executive agreement with keep Peninsula Metropolitan Park District for the same purpose. Referral to CDC data filing of counsel hearing July 25. Next, under final action, you have resolution R2023108. And this is a resolution confirming appointment of a new member to the Anderson Island Citizens Advisory Board. That's Robert Pedal. This will be for final action under B. You'll have R2023109. This is appointing two members, Marcus Harvey, William Barrett to the Fredrickson Advisory Committee. This is for final action. Under item six, you've got a message from the executive transmitting ordinance, which was approved. And that's 202316. Then under item nine, you have 20, our 2023100. And this is a resolution of the council amending resolution R2022190, which establishes a second committee on homelessness, appointing officers, members and officers, and setting committee dates and times. There is amendment for that. I'm happy to go over it. It sets a meeting at the times. The number two is our 2023101. And it's a resolution identifying street lighting and other neighborhood traffic projects for funding. And it received due pass recommendation, I can't remember strict infrastructure development on June 27. It's up for final action. Next, our 2023106. It's a resolution adopting a preliminary 202425 budget priorities. It was heard in Rules and Operations Committee earlier today. It's up for final action. And then finally, you have our 2023107 establishing a process for displaying commemorative flags. We just heard that and it's up for final action. And that is, I missed the committee recommendation on our 2023100. That was to pass it with operations on 236. So if you have an answering question.
Thank you. Are there any questions by members about tomorrow's July 11th council meeting agenda? Not seeing any Mr. Cox bring to our attention council amendment one to 2023100.
Yes, that that particular amendment would set insert a meeting time of the second, fourth Wednesdays at 1:30 for the second committee promises.
Thank you. Are there any questions about amendment number one to 2023100? Not seeing. Councilmember Row.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to make sure that that's embedded pretty well, that it doesn't cause any problems with any of the other non-council committee meetings, mainly the flood control district, et cetera.
So on council member, the date and time selected to staff's knowledge doesn't conflict with other meetings. For instance, it's the alternate weeks for the health board. So staff examined that. So there shouldn't be any conflicts of the time and day of the week that's proposed.
Thank you. Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you. Let's see any other items under section two. That brings us to section three, review of committee agendas for the week. Mr. Cox asks you to be expeditious and do a summary of this as well, please.
Yes, you've got an amended meeting schedule in front of you for July 10th through the 14th, 2023. You already had your Rules and Operations Committee meeting was just conducted. We're in the, and that was 10 o'clock meeting. We're at the 11 o'clock Monday study session. You will have other business later in the meeting on Kenyon Road presentation and the Pierce County Library System update annual report about measure of day. 1:30 is Public Safety Committee meeting. The they're going to be considering getting a presentation on the siding and cannabis businesses. Presentation on Tacoma's private property abatement program. And that's that meeting later today. Tomorrow, July 11th, you have the Economic Infrastructure Development Committee. They're taking up one proposal 20232023, which is an ordinance granting a non-exclusive franchise of Summit Water and Supply Company. The date of final counsel hearing, and that's August 8. Then there's two presentations, very long-term financing, financial plan and meat production, processing, infrastructure, and labor study. The presenters of the first are applying Public Works Department. And the presenters of the second are Public Works as well as consultants Mal Foster, Alongby, and Catherine. The under Tuesday session, you have a normal business, then you have your 3 o'clock council meeting. And on Wednesday, you have a flood control zone district meeting at 9:30 AM. And that's your committee agenda for the week.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Any questions about the committee agendas for the week? Let's sing any, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Cox, any discussion of administrative items?
No administrative items today, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. That brings us to section five, other business. If there's no objection, I'd like to just reorder this and invite our Pierce County Library System and Pierce County Library Director up first, Ms. Kazarati. So we'll move to the Pierce County Library System Annual Report and ballot measure update. Ms. Kazarati, welcome.
Hi. Nice to see you all again today. Thanks for having me. I'll try to be quick. Thank you for allowing me to come and present. Our intention is within my role now, I'd like to come once a year to provide the full council with an update. Once we complete our fiscal year, we submit to the state our library statistical report through the state library. We also submit to the auditor, once we've completed closing the books and complete that financial. And then we publish an annual report, which is why it's July. And now I am here because all of those things have been completed from the end of our fiscal year. I did have a presentation. Are you advancing that? Is that awesome? Thank you. Okay. So I wanted to kind of provide a little bit of an overview of where we're at, share some information about what we're working on this year and happy to answer any questions at the end. So the Pierce County Library System serves the 655,000 people within our 19 library facilities in the unincorporated Pierce County and the cities that have annexed into our library system. We are the fourth largest library system in the state of Washington. And our library holds more than a million items in our collections in both physical and digital collections. Our mission is to bring the world of information to all people in our community. And our vision is to be the community's choice for the discovery and exchange of information and ideas. Public libraries have endured for centuries to provide free access. I wanted to come in and hear your discussion on the flags for the connection there between the ideas of free speech and our role in government. Our mission is then, of course, to also spark success for the Pierce County residents in our pursuit of learning, enjoyment, and connecting as a community. Those are our three pillars in our strategic areas of focus. The conclusion of our fiscal year, that is hard to read, I apologize for that. In 2022, we had $43 million, 194 in our revenues, 42,639,100 in our expenditures. We are 99% funded by property and sales tax. We do privately fundraise through our foundation, more than a million dollars each year. The Pierce County Library Foundation, we greatly appreciate the donors and the work that our grant writers and our foundation staff do to support the overall library budget and some specific projects on operating as well as capital projects. Our expenditures are not uncommon to libraries. Around 70% of our total budget is applied toward personnel. Staff salaries, wages, benefits, all of all of those categories under the umbrella of personnel. We could not deliver any services in our buildings if we did not have the people. The people are what make our magic happen. Our collections are roughly 10% of the budget, which is something that's important, particularly after the pandemic, where we really invested heavily in digital collections. Fun fact, digital books can sometimes cost five times more than a print book. We may spend $84 on a digital audiobook as compared to a print book. So publishing is still working its way through understanding digital and print and how to work with libraries on those permissions. We also have about 20% of our budget then expenditures go toward technology facilities and general operations making up the remainder. We did in 2022 have one just shy of 2 million visits, which we're pleased with in the first full year of operations coming out of the pandemic. We're still not quite there yet to 2019 levels, but we are still providing curbside services. We do still support a lot of folks through virtual programming and collections. So seeing people coming back in and out of the buildings is a really a great treat. And we're continuing to see that coming back as we've now invested in the return of in-person programming. We did have nearly 5 million checkouts, circulation, we call them circs in our business of those collections, both physical and digital. And we have 300,000 uses of our online databases. So that's everything from a newspaper database where people could research articles that are no longer available through a publisher. They could be, we have a lot of job skill training databases, those types of digital resources. And then we have almost 285,000 cardholders. I don't have a breakdown of digital only versus we don't separate those. If you have a card, you have a card, you have access to everything. So I mentioned, we have three strategic pillars. Our learning is one of our strategic areas of focus. People who use our library are learning to read, learning new job skills, learning new languages. We bring, we've brought back in-person programming, as I mentioned. So in 2022, we also were able to bring back things like our traditional storytimes, but also some pilots and working with partners like the University of Washington to bring forward and a storytime focused on children and families who have autism. And we've had really positive responses. That is something that is increasingly common in libraries is to have dedicated services to children and families with kids on the spectrum. We also, as I mentioned, we have those online learning platforms, those databases. And in 2022, we had 154 people who were using the North Star Digital Literacy Online Learning Platform. Enjoyment is our second area to mention. And we believe that there is value in reading for pleasure and that recreation brings a lot of value to quality of life. And in this strategic focus area, we inspire imagination through extensive and diverse collections. We want to support and foster a love of reading and create new opportunities to discover new interests and pursue new passions. So building on those new library cardholders who discovered us during the pandemic, we really are investing heavily in those digital collections. Lots of folks are listening to streaming audiobooks in their car these days. Our, in 2022, we surpassed 2 million digital book checkouts, which is very high for libraries. So we have a really robust use of that digital collection. And then last year, we had nearly 15,000 children, teens, and adults participating in summer reading. We're already on track to exceed this that this year, as we've brought back in-person programming. So thank you. And community, in the pillar of community, that has been really a challenge coming out of the pandemic. And we're working really hard to rebuild those connections with communities by also getting out of the building and being present in our communities, partnering with agencies, attending events and being present. And we have moved forward prior to even my coming, but we're working really hard on continuing to build a robust EDI strategy for the library, which is both internal and external. Appreciate the equity index. We reference that frequently in the work that I'm doing now. We're also experimenting with things that we've learned through the loss of our library in Lakewood, how to bring the library outside of the walls. We call them pop-ups, where we'll bring catered collections of materials and resources to community events, working with community partners like Pierce College and making those collections available in small, light, lighter, quicker, cheaper, flexible spaces. We also invested in 2022, took advantage of the time while the meetings were closed, meeting rooms were closed to update some of the technology in those spaces. And we're continuing to work on that in 2023 as well. We'll go ahead and partnerships I mentioned were significant for us. We worked very closely with the health department through the whole experience during COVID, providing free test, test, test kits in all our branches and in some locations, vaccine clinics. We are strong partners with the elections department as a voter points of assistance across the county. And our South Hill branch was the highest ballot submission location in the county in the last general election with almost 15,000 ballots. Tacoma Probono is a great partner as well. They're helping us expand services throughout the county where people don't have to come to Tacoma, but rather come to their local library. We've given legal help, free legal help in the branches, which has ranged from assistance through domestic violence to housing. It started with housing coming out of the pandemic. So we're excited to continue to build on that partnership and grow that as well. The story of 2022 is a sad and difficult one, which was the closure of the Lakewood Library. It was a a great challenge for me and starting in my position. As you know, the library did close in June of 2022 due to conditions with the roof. And we were working with the Community Advisory Committee through the end of 2022 to get a recommendation from the community on the direction to go. I continue to work with our board on the long term and our staff on the short term. Right now, we are in the process of waiting for approvals on permits for an interim library. And we're looking forward to making it through that phase so that we can secure contractors and start to share a more concrete timeline for when we can open that branch. We're continuing to keep our foot on the gas as best we can with getting something open there. But we've learned a lot, as I mentioned, about how to get creative. And we've got great partners. The Historical Society is working with us on exhibit that will launch at the Summer Fest. And I forget the date, August, something 13th, I think. I can't remember. And working with those partners, both to have opportunities to honor the legacy and memory of the building, but also to make sure the library is very present. We've had 500 plus programs. The staff are very involved with the schools over the summer and with all of those great partners in the community. On the other side of the county, it's the other, like in the news, which I understand rules took up this morning. Thank you, is the Sumner Library Project. That was something that was also in the works for many years prior to my time. Many of you are very aware of what's going on there. So I was intending to use this as the space to give you that update. We have, since I was here last, been working very closely with many folks in the community out in the Sumner area to share information. We've hosted open houses, which were very well attended, actually. I really appreciated people came out. We had a morning and an evening session. And they had great questions and we really appreciated they took the time to come and get them answered. I've met with the Pualip Sumner Chamber CEO. We presented to the Government Affairs Committee, the Economic Development Board, and then continued to meet with leaders in the community and with business leaders individually. I've held numerous, numerous meetings, one-on-one. The Main Street Association has brochures and flyers. And the library has attended community events with tables, providing information and talking with folks at all of and many, including the industrial park meetings, where we make sure that we're present to share information and connect with people. We also just sent a district-wide communication to the residents of Sumner on the ballot measure. And that, I think, was what helped spur people to come to the open houses is that they received that flyer and then said, oh, I have questions. And the timing of that was really great. So let me see. So our, now we're just in the sort of home stretch in terms of the August 1st election. The ballots, I'm sure you know, will be mailed. I just received my voter guide in the mail. And we're following our normal and traditional customary communication channels. In the meantime, pending the outcome of that, as I know you're taking up next week, the LCFA for the November 1st election would be proceeded with if it is not, if it does not pass by the voters in this August 1st. Almost there. The foundation, as I mentioned earlier, does raise about a million dollars for us on our annual budget. And we appreciate that in our annual campaign. We brought back the annual trivia bee in person last year and are really excited about the the growth that that event has continued to take. We raised 45,000 at the last year. And then this year, we have a library giving day and we were able to raise $50,000 from our one-day library giving day, which is in April. And we also have a capital campaign that we are starting to pick back up for libraries in Sumner and Lakewood as well. So we continue to work on the capital side with the foundation as well. So in 2023, we are in July. So we're halfway through our year. We are working a lot on a lot of maintenance for our facilities with the really exciting things like replacing the siding at the Fife Library, replacing the doors to be ADA accessible at Gig Harbor, Key Center, South Hill, and Silicon Library Branches, paving the parking lots at Graham, which also had a major road construction recently completed. So we're happy people can get in and out of that branch again. And we are nearly completed with mitigation of contamination at the Buckley Pierce County Library. We are hoping to get that NFA very soon. We are working with, we are about to start, I should say, an RFQ process to select a consultant who will work with me and the board in 2024 to conduct a long-range facility planning project. We are right now in the process of selecting a consultant for building condition assessments. We expect to be complete by the end of 2023. And we'll be able to use those building, bless you, condition assessments as a part of our process to do the long-range facility planning, which we hope will give us a much better strategy to be good stewards of the resources we have, but also better develop a plan for how to address those capital needs in the future. So we don't have a situation like Lakewood have ever happened again. I mentioned, we're continuing to invest in those in those digital collections, not at the expense of print, but rather a lot of reallocation toward what people are really using and what people really want. Our board has a meeting on Wednesday. Our Collection Development Director will be giving a presentation on how we select books. How does a book get on the shelf? So I know our board is looking forward to hearing a little bit more of the the inner works on that. If anyone's interested, you can chime in online. Our technology, I mentioned, we've been updating all of our meeting rooms. The expectation now, of course, is to have an AV infrastructure for hybrid meetings. So we're continuing to work on those as well as our public laptops. We have public desktop computers and our branches all have laptops. So people can take some laptop and go sit in a comfortable chair. We also have, most of our friends at the library have resumed their activities. So people can donate their books and the friends have book sales across the county and the branches. And as I mentioned, we are resuming in-person programming, but we also have learned a lot through the pandemic. And so our programs and partnerships director is starting to build an evaluation tool for us to better select the types of programs that we're going to offer aligned with community needs, apply an equity index, and really dig into staffing is our most great resource. And so we want to make sure we're using all of those resources wisely. We are working a lot internally as well. We just launched a new website that is actually ADA compliant. So it's much more mobile friendly and easier to use, which is excellent. And then in 2022, the live, excuse me, it was actually April of this year. The board made the formal decision after three years of pausing on library overdue fines to eliminate library fines. And that is a huge equity barrier to accessing the library. So that was a major milestone that we were able to accomplish. And we will also be doing strategic planning in the next year. So we're preparing that this year. I have been here for a year in this role. I have learned a lot. I am very grateful to the community partners that we have and the agencies that we work with in this county. Our library system has gone through a lot of change. Libraries in general are really reexamining the work we do with how we're serving people with often declining resources. And so we're really going to take this next year to sink our teeth into planning for the long range, both in terms of our operations and our facilities. And I'll look forward to being able to partner with many of you in getting input on that process. As community leaders in your districts, your voice will be very important to us as we move through that process. And I wanted to leave you with a story about Victoria. Victoria was struggling to get housing assistance. And she didn't have access to a smartphone, computer, or the internet until she came to the Fife Library. And the staff at the branch helped her navigate all the different websites for government and nonprofit agencies. And she was able to submit applications and get herself lined up to get the life-changing assistance that she needed to secure stable housing. And we provide those free computer access and high-speed internet at all of our branches. And our staff is there to support each individual person and their own unique needs. Everyday thousands of people are coming to our branches. And they're walking through the doors with a unique need for discovering a new skill, learning to read, being a part of their community. And it's our job to make sure that each and every one of them feel like they belong in our libraries and our communities and that we have what they need. So thank you very much for letting me take an opportunity to update you on where we're at with the library. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Ms. Kazarati. Congratulations on completing your first year of leadership at our Pierce County Library System. And we're so pleased to have you. I'll start with questions and just for our folks watching. Can you remind us the governance of the Pierce County Library System? How is your, who is your, who are your board of governors and
Yeah.
your trustees and how are they selected?
Yes, absolutely. Under the RCW, we are a junior taxing district in the state of Washington. So we have a board of trustees, a five-member board of trustees. When the county gets to a million residents, that will increase to, I'm seven, I'm sorry, blank for a second, to a seven-member board. Our board is appointed by the council. And so we work very closely with the county in the appointment process. We'll have two terms that are coming up in '24, by the way. So our board follows open meeting law as all governing bodies do. And we, as I mentioned in the financial section, are majority funded by property tax. So we are a government agency.
Thank you so much. Other questions or comments by councilmembers? Councilmember Merle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question. I know you've only been here a year and you've done an incredible amount of work, given what you had to walk into. So I appreciate all that you're doing and trying to get everyone in sync and moving forward. So I appreciate that. Going back to your finances. seventy percent of your cost is personnel labor-related. Are your labor contracts union?
Yes.
When do you negotiate those?
Twenty-four. Three, we have a three-year cycle, so, and we're up, so we'll negotiate next year.
Okay. And you're fully aware that the cost of labor has gone up substantially?
Yes, sir.
So are you anticipating that built into your budget? Not saying that what you're building in there, but since it is labor-driven, I just want to make sure that, you know, you're looking at that moving forward.
Yes, absolutely. One of the things that I've asked one of our directors on the Public Services arm of the library was to complete a staffing analysis this year, to both look at the business of the library, where where are we busy, and we did adjust our hours of operation this year when we completed that, look at who's using the library, when are we busy, which ones are open when. The second piece, and we just recently received a staffing model proposal internally, so we'll continue to look at what we need to keep the building open, how much we want to do outside. And then in '23, as I mentioned, we're starting the process to look at strategic planning, which will also happen. So I think we're really looking at some potential, we hope, coordination with our union, but also what's the right number of FTE? How many people do we need? Where? Do we have the right number of facility staff with the needs that we have? And so we'll definitely be turning a lot of those stones over. We also know with the 1% property tax cap, that what I don't feel confident having yet, that we're starting the process to work on, it relates to long-range operations and long-range capital, but what is our strategy for how we're going to manage that? My predecessor wisely created a sustainability fund so that we can push off having to run levy-lid lifts longer. And that's something that I know is going to be on our horizon, and so this next year is going to be a lot of that type of strategy to look at that. We have a really good relationship with the union now, and so the last bargaining process that we had was really was really good, so I'm hopeful that we'll find agreements on what's best for the staffing and they'll work with us as well for what the the needs are.
Okay.
It'll be my first bargaining process, so wish me luck.
Okay, wish you well on that. The other question that I had mainly is facilities. In your mix of facilities, you have, do you have any that you actually own the property versus lease agreements with the other jurisdictions?
Yes.
How, what's that mix look like?
I believe it's thirteen or fourteen that we own ourselves, and they range in size, like five acres in Graham to, you know, just shy of two in Lakewood. They are definitely assorted in their size and acquisition. We have leased space in Milton, in DuPont. We have some in Anderson Island where it's inside of another space. So there is a mix, but the majority of the facilities, the thirteen, fourteen that we're doing the building condition assessments on, we own and operate. Many of them were built either purchased or built from the bond that the library district passed in 1986, so most of those were built before '95, so we're really recognizing a thirty-year, you know, hit for those needing some work, and that's part of the building condition assessment and facility planning.
Okay, one more specific question on the facility down in Ording. Is that leased or owned?
That's in a partnership with the city, and they own the building. I believe we lease our portion from them.
Okay. Okay, I mean, that's kind of what it looks like.
Yeah, sometimes they're a condo agreement, like in UP, it's a condo, but I believe Ording was city-owned, and we pay for our portion.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Not seeing any. Ms. Cazarrati, thank you for being with us.
Thank you. Please reach out anytime.
Really appreciate it. Mr. Taylor, I'm going to ask your assistance in introducing the Canyon Road presentation and our guests from Planning and Public Works Department, please.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair and council members. So at your Monday study session today, you have an update on the status of the Canyon Road Regional Connection project. So the department has been, has asked, been asked to come in and brief you on the status of that project, an update on the various segments of the project. It's quite a detailed presentation that they're going to provide to you today, should be fairly lengthy. It's a follow-up to the information that you received earlier this year regarding a delay in one of the projects, specifically the bridge project related to some additional information on flood elevations and flood risks associated with that project, as well as delays related to grant monies or return of grant monies to the Puget Sound Regional Council. Hopefully you recall that briefing earlier this year, so it's a follow-up to that, but it also includes information on other aspects of the project, so I think this is just a good holistic, comprehensive review of where things stand in that project. The department does have a set of essentially corridor plans for that project that they're going to set up. It's fairly, I hear it's fairly large, so it's going to take, I think, three or four ESOS.
I'm just going to leave it up on the table.
Okay, all right, so if we could bear with staff for a minute while they get that set up. While they do that, you'll see that Ms. Neal, the manager for the project, is getting queued up. Ms. Neal will be the primary driver for the PowerPoint, but you also see a number of other staff, including Deputy Director Bruce Wagner that's present today, and of course Melissa McFadden, the county engineer is present today as well to provide additional support as needed for this presentation. I expect it may take a half hour to go through the presentation plus Q and A. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
All right.
Ms. Neal, welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
We can hear you well.
All right. This is my first time physically back at council chambers since COVID, so this is exciting for me, to see everybody face-to-face.
Welcome.
My name is Latisha Neal. I'm the Transportation Improvement Manager for the Office of the County Engineer, and I am the manager of the Canyon Road Regional Connection Project. What we've laid in front of you on the table is a map showing all of the county road projects that we've done over the years to improve the Canyon Road corridor. Those represented in green are completed. Those that are in red are in progress, and yellow is under construction. It stretches from Frederickson all the way over to the city of Fife. As you can see, it's a lot of projects, a lot of investment by the county, a lot of resources put into this overall project, so I just wanted to make sure you had a feel for the significance of this effort that we've been going through. On the screen, though, as a slide is a little larger view of the area that Canyon Road fits into and how it fits into the region as a whole. This really is a regional project. It is going to provide congestion relief, it's going to foster economic opportunities. There will be industrial and economic growth from the completion of this entire corridor, and we're doing a lot of environmental work as well. It's important to note that this is not a project that is alone. We're not working in a in a black box. We are part of a partnership with our respective partner agencies in the region who are also doing work in this area. The Washington State Department of Transportation is currently working to complete the SR-167 connection and the area through Fife, and Fife itself is planning improvements along Seventieth Avenue in anticipation of this project connecting into their city. So this project really completes a very long corridor that the county has been working on, and will complement and leverage the work of our partners as well, providing safer and more direct access across the Puyallup River, which is currently a choke point, as you are all aware. I'm sure you have been to the Memorial Bridge any number of times and had had to wait through countless cycles of the lights and the stop signs for people to get through there. The infrastructure improvements that we're planning will affect safety in the area, create conditions for more job and economic growth, and also be a faster and more efficient route through the valley. So some basic updates about the project. The Canyon Road Regional Connection project is really two projects. We refer to them as the river crossing and the railroad crossing. The slide in front of you right now is for the railroad crossing, and the area circled in green is the railroad crossing portion of the project. The design in this portion of the project is essentially complete. We have finished our engineering. It is ready to go on a shelf and be constructed. We've also almost completed all the property acquisitions that are necessary to build this portion of the project. The environmental process is also nearing completion. So it's had a lot of work put into it. It will be updated. A lot of the elements that you put into a project that has federal money have to be updated on a regular basis until you get to construction, but the foundational work has been done. We have added a full traffic signal at the 52nd and Canyon intersection for Chief Lushai School access, and of course, we are still working on the right-of-way acquisitions to wrap that up. On this particular board next to me, you can see the acquisitions, and that will also be a slide on the screen very shortly. Moving to the river crossing, there's a small typo on this. This is for the river crossing. The design is thirty percent complete, and right-of-way conversations were just beginning earlier this year. We have made some great progress on this portion of the project, but there are still some significant elements to work through, one of which actually resulted in the delay of the schedule that you were all notified about earlier this year. So we are working through the process of getting the floodplain analysis completed and working through the NEPA and SEPA process for this element, this segment of the overall project. There have been any number of questions about why, why this alignment, why are we affecting the property owners that we are? This overall alignment was selected by council many years ago, and in doing the design of the project, we've really tried to thread the needle, so to speak. This is a developed area. There are people who own homes here, who have businesses here, and we try to impact as few people as we can when we do this kind of work. So we really tried to balance the improvements that need to be made with the impacts to the property owners. That's why the roadway alignment is exactly where it is and why the widening is occurring on one side or another, but because there have been a number of questions about this, we looked at what would happen if we modified that alignment just a little bit. So if you look at this table with the current design for lanes, we are affecting thirty-one parcels. If we were to shift that alignment just a little bit to the left or to the northwest, depending on how you you look at it, to try and minimize impacts to the farming community of Strino's and Pika's on the southwest, southeast side of 52nd. Unfortunately, it doesn't really help a lot. We would only decrease the number of parcels impacted by one, and we would be relocating additional people, which is a huge impact and something we do try to avoid whenever possible. If we were to do the opposite and shift just a little bit to the right or to the southeast, we would have significant impacts, much more so than currently, to Strino Farm and Pika, and yet we would only decrease the number of parcels we're impacting again by one. You're not making a big, a big difference in the number of parcels that are being impacted. We also took a quick look at what if it was only two lanes instead of four lanes? As long as we're going to construct an improved roadway with active transportation elements, you are still going to be impacting the same number of parcels. The impact would be less because we're not widening as much, but you are still widening the overall footprint of the project by installing those active transportation elements, so you're still impacting thirty-one parcels. And the traffic impacts, when you do that, are significant. Two lanes is going to feel very, very small, very, very quickly. With the traffic modeling we have and the numbers, the volumes of vehicles that we have currently and are expecting as we grow over the next ten and twenty years, this will almost immediately upon construction, excuse me, construction, be overwhelmed and start to feel like a parking lot will be gridlocked. There are multiple property owners always affected by any type of of project and any alternative that we choose. One thing to remember about this particular project and any project actually is that the driveway widths, configurations, and locations are always coordinated with the property owners as part of our right-of-way negotiations and overall public coordination. On this particular project, we did look at different elements that could be added that may help the agricultural community. On-street parking is specifically excluded on major arterial roadways, and the agricultural community did not want parking in this area. One of the things the agricultural community was very interested in was reduced lighting levels from what we would, we would typically design for an arterial roadway, and so we have done that. We've reduced the roadway lighting in this area by forty percent to respect the rural nature of the community. We understand that one of the things that people love about this part of Pierce County is its rural character and the proximity to working farms, so we have been collaborating with the agricultural community and trying to find ways that this project can benefit them specifically, or that the project can be slightly modified to make it a better end result for the agricultural community. We are currently in the process of four different analyses for the Canyon Road Regional Connection project. We are wrapping up a benefit-cost analysis, which we started a little over a year ago. We are also working on an economic impact analysis that was per Council Resolution 2022-144. We are midway through an equity analysis that should be wrapping up in the next couple of months, and all of these will be final results provided to council later this fall. And the big element of the schedule change earlier this year, we are in the middle of a floodplain modeling and analysis to look at what the Puyallup River flood basin is currently looking like and how we can make sure that our design is resilient to any future flood events that occur. So to go through those each one by one, a benefit-cost analysis is an evaluation. It's a tool to use to assess the economic advantages and disadvantages of a project or an investment of some kind. In really simplistic terms, if the monetary value of the benefits to the project outweigh the monetary value of the costs of the project, your benefit-cost ratio would be greater than one. In this particular case, our draft results are in from the consultant on the analysis, and our benefit-cost ratio is 1.8, so we're looking at almost a two-to-one return on our investment with this project. There are a lot of factors that go into a benefit-cost analysis, and it's a very technical process. Because benefit-cost analyses are now being required in a lot of the federal grant programs, we made sure that we follow the methodology in the USDOT guidance for BCA's for projects so that we are fully eligible for all the grant opportunities that are out there. But as you can see on the slide, there are a number of different elements that feed into the final number and the final benefit-cost ratio, everything from operations and maintenance to travel time savings, quality of life, residual value of assets, they all are given monetary values based on USDOT guidance and are factored into this final benefit-cost ratio. A 1.8 result is good, and it definitely means that we are eligible for the federal funding opportunities that are out there. So we are very excited to get this result back. The economic impact analysis is also being wrapped up. It also resulted in some very good numbers. The total number of jobs for both project development and operations are positive. We have high-dollar values for labor income, added value and business output from this project resulting in hundreds of millions of dollars. This is a piece of the overall benefit-cost analysis ratio, so these numbers are part of what contributed to that 1.8 value on the previous slide. Not going to go into a lot of details on these because they're very long and technical documents, and they will be provided to you when they are completed later this fall. The equity analysis is the last element that our consultant is working on, and we're really focusing on exploring the impacts to some of our underserved and historically disadvantaged communities by identifying those vulnerable communities that are impacted by the project, assessing the impact, and that is looking at everything from the jobs to educational opportunities, transit opportunities. transit opportunities that the project may or may not bring through, recreation, social destinations, all of it feeds into this analysis. And then what mitigation of any impacts need to occur? The results of this analysis will feed into further design restructuring of the project. And this work is expected to be complete, as I said, in the next couple of months. We will be wrapping all of these pieces together in the fall. Floodplain mapping is the fourth analysis that we're currently working on, the one that's really affected our schedule for the project. We paused the design and the environmental permitting efforts that we were underway with to update the flood maps in the project area. The idea behind this is to align this project with our comprehensive flood hazard management plan to create a more complete picture of the flooding that is occurring currently in the valley and what we can expect in the future. And therefore feed that information back into the project to make sure that our final design is as resilient as possible and will not be adversely affected with any future flood events that occur. All this data that we are pulling together and the final analysis will be shared with cities along the Puyallup River as well as the Puyallup and Muckleshoot Tribe of Indians because it impacts them as well. The Puyallup River impacts all of us. So we will make sure that that data is available to all. This is a really extensive effort. The collection of the data and the analysis of the data will take the remainder of this year. And then we'll be needing to feed that information back into the design and adjust the design accordingly. So this has put a big pause in our project schedule. Another element that's currently underway that I'm sure you're very aware of is the update to our comprehensive plan. The Canyon Road project is a significant project within the comprehensive plan and is one that is supported by land use decisions and investments already made in Pierce County. So as part of this update, we took a close look at some alternatives to doing the Canyon Road Regional Connection Project. What really makes sense moving forward? What are the different pros and cons of some of these other ideas other than what we've been designing now for several years? So we looked at five different alternatives. The first alternative is most simplistic. What if we just replaced the Milroy Bridge exactly where it is? Exactly the same configuration, two lanes of traffic, basically replacing aging infrastructure. That's what alternative one is. And we certainly have a reduced cost, obviously. It also would likely have potential support from the local agriculture community because there is no impact then to any of the community property owners in the area. On the other side of the coin, we do have a letter from the Puyallup Tribe of Indians that expresses desire to have the Milroy Bridge eliminated. They don't want that structure there at that location. So there may be some additional concerns with this. We will also not be able to keep piers out of the water, which is a significant issue with the tribe. We would also have to completely close the the bridge crossing in order to construct a new structure at that location, which would cause a lot of a lot of community concerns. And this is one of the only ways across the river in this localized area. And it doesn't address any current or future traffic congestion concerns. So it's not a great choice, but it does affect a basic need of replacing aging infrastructure. Alternative two, what if we replace the Milroy Bridge, but replaced it with a larger bridge? Same location, but let's make it a larger bridge that can handle more traffic. That's obviously a choke point. We've all been there. So let's make it four lanes, two in each direction, no other improvements. Right? Again, we're replacing aging infrastructure. We're also counting for some increased congestion, which is excellent. The, there is potential for grant opportunities and a reduced cost. On the negative side, we can have some Puyallup tribal concerns. We still will not be able to keep piers out of the water. It would require us some additional work at River Road. So we would need to work with Washita and get their concurrence with a new plan like this and it would again require full closure of the connection. So we're accomplishing some things with this alternative. Third alternative, let's eliminate the Milroy Bridge at its current location and put in a replacement bridge at the 70th Avenue location that's been the focus of our project. So new location for the bridge, but an at-grade two-lane bridge, just like we have today. The existing Milroy Bridge could remain open during construction. That's awesome. Keep traffic flowing while we're putting a new bridge into place. There is a cost reduction. Again, we're not affecting a lot of property owners. We don't have to buy a lot of parcels to make this happen. It does limit future options for extending the corridor. It doesn't support any of the freight movement from Frederickson, which has been the the nexus of all of these county road projects in the in the map on the table in front of you. And it's very inconsistent with 70th Avenue, which is currently four lanes. Five has already widened a good portion of 70th Avenue to two lanes in each direction in anticipation of our currently designed project. And again, we would have to work with Washita to get their concurrent since it would affect River Road. Alternative number four would again put a new bridge at the 70th Avenue location, but let's make it four lanes. So it can handle some traffic. It's now compliant with what Fife has done. So there's some smooth connectivity there. It eliminates the, a lot of the other improvements that we have as a part of the project. The existing Milroy Bridge remains open during construction. But much of the work that we've done so far then is throwaway. And there's some major constructability and feasibility issues. We actually had an at-grade bridge as part of the design of the project a number of years ago. It was such a large structure. It was larger than a football field when you actually measured it. We had some significant constructability concerns to be able to build something like that at that location because it's so hemmed in with the water and the roadways on each side that it was eventually set aside for our current grade separated design for constructability and feasibility issues. So we're going, taking a step back and still having to work through those with this alternative. Alternative five would be what if we just built the river crossing? Don't build the railroad crossing, just build the river, the river crossing as we've designed it so far. This preserves future options for extending the corridor. It definitely improves congestion on River Road and North Lovey Road. The existing Milroy Bridge can remain open during construction. There's some real positives to this alternative. On the negative side, however, you now have a four-lane corridor coming down through Fife, crossing the river and then nicking down into two lanes on 52nd through the agricultural community. This is going to result in significant congestion, gridlock, and it's not going to handle future traffic needs. It doesn't address traffic impacts to the agricultural community. It doesn't address safety concerns or for the school right there at the railroad crossing. It does jeopardize future funding as we fail to deliver on some commitments we've made and accepting federal funding previous years. There's, there are some issues with this, but it could be done. And that's what we're doing here. We're looking at alternatives that could be done and trying to really fairly look at the pros and cons of each one. As you can see in the map on this particular slide, we've made note of some particular areas that would trigger this, this alternative would trigger additional improvements necessary. The amount of congestion by having that choke point on 52nd would trigger safety concerns, improvements needed at intersections that aren't currently part of our tip. So you're looking at additional projects that would need to be completed, but it definitely can be done. So I've tried to summarize here for you what these different alternatives look at. Alternative zero is what we have designed, the current project full build out and everything is in comparison to that. Is it an improvement in one way or another? I want to particularly note that we have a column for tribal community and it shows X's all the way down. I wanted to be sure that staff, Pierce County staff was not speaking for the tribe. We have not received from the tribe any comments on any of these alternatives. This was all done in a room, just to give you information. So I want to be very clear about this. None of these alternatives have been shared with the tribe and we have not received any input from them on these. So these ideas would be brand new that we would need to run through the Puyallup tribe. We did look at one additional alternative besides those for the comp plan update and that's shown on this slide. This is the what-if of building both projects, but making the entire corridor in this area two lanes. It didn't work really well in the modeling. I'll be honest with you. The numbers were, did not look good. A two-lane corridor through this area begins to fail very quickly. You have huge backups in City of Fife along 70th Avenue that go for miles. You have huge backups on Pioneer Way as people try to turn onto this new roadway. It's only two lanes. The traffic modeling basically fails very quickly. The design would include active transportation. That's, that's your plus. You're providing active transportation through the area. But you are not looking at the congestion and the needs of the future. We've already purchased some of the property that we need and a lot of the mitigation area that we need. That's okay. And we wouldn't have to do some redesign of all the project elements. So I don't know that this really accomplishes a lot and it's still a lot of money spent for a, for a project that doesn't address future needs. So those are the alternatives that we looked at. To go back now to our original project, the Canyon Road Regional Connection Project, we do have a funding strategy for the project. The design and property acquisition is fully funded according to our adopted transportation improvement plan. The construction funding strategy is quite a bit more complicated. This is a very expensive project as currently conceived. We would need a combination of funding from local partners, traffic impact fees, legislative appropriations, grants and potentially bonding, which we've already opened the door to that conversation with you last year through the Transportation Improvement Program that was adopted then. So it would take a combination of all of these elements of funding to really be able to construct this project. I did want to touch very briefly on public engagement. This is, this is a big project that affects a lot of people, not just the people who live there and are having their property impacted, but the amount of people who use this to get to your schools, to stores, to drive through the area, the people who shop at the farms, the people who are going up into Fife for business, freight that's going through to Port of Tacoma. There are a lot of people that are impacted by this area. So we've really been trying to get out there and speak with the public and make them aware of the project and get their input and feedback on what it is that we're doing. Our outreach outreach over the last few years has really changed significantly with COVID too. We've moved away from the static events where we report out on what we're doing and toward more of ongoing conversations and taking advantage of community events. Last summer, we were out at Meeker Days, Milton Days and the Five Harvest Festival and spoke to a lot of people about the project. We speak with community organizations at their regular meetings. We have had, well, we've provided some of the statistics for you here since 2019. We've had a lot of conversations with a lot of different people. The vast majority of the people we speak to are very enthusiastic about the project and have told us they believe this project is going to make their lives better in various different ways. So it's rewarding to hear the public is interested in a project. Of course, they're not into the weeds and the details as you are, but it is nice to know that the public is in general supportive about an improvement of this type. So just to hit on the timeline again, this is, will hopefully just be a refresher for you on what you are already given earlier this year is the change to our schedule from the need to look at the floodplain analysis. We're doing that mapping and that analysis this year. We'll be taking the results and reevaluating the bridge design next year in 2024. And so we hope that by 2025, we'll be ready to resume the environmental permitting effort and the property acquisition efforts. This does take time to complete. So at this point, we're planning construction starting not before 2027. So it's moved out our timeline pretty significantly. But it's a large project. It's a large project. This does give us time to do a really important element of mapping the floodplain and analyzing it. It also gives us more time to collaborate with the Puyallup Tribe of Indians who are very concerned about some of the impacts to their properties, their reservation lands and their tribal fishing rights. Our next steps recommended for the council is to go ahead and complete the floodplain analysis, look at what those results are, complete some additional consultation with the Puyallup Tribe and then move forward with the full build out of the project with a plan to start construction in 2027. One of the pieces of information that were in your packet was a digital version of a new folio that we've created with a lot of this information in it. I have printed copies if you would like them. It's the most up-to-date information. We have some great graphics and great talking points. If you're ever asked questions from the public, yes, exactly. So I'll leave these with you, Taylor, for your use. And at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Neal. Thank you for the comprehensive update. I'm certain there's some questions and comments by colleagues. Start with Vice Chair Kimball.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for coming out to update us on this. Love the three panel presentation we have here of what we've done. So there is an green about how much have we spent so far? How much are we into this project already?
We have spent over $100 million on this corridor so far.
Been over $100 million, so?
Yes. It's a large investment.
And the, the concept there is we've already put that much in. We need to complete the, the project with that maturity in.
That is one perspective, yes.
The, the initial designs, I don't believe, and Mr. Winesbury, if maybe the panel we have here, if we could get that up on the screen, the when I'm looking through that, there's a intersection at 52nd. Now, that wasn't part of the original designs. Is that correct? That was added later?
The intersection was part of the original sign, the traffic signal. The traffic signal was added in response to concerns brought up by the Puyallup Tribe and Chief Lushai School.
And when we look at the segment that goes from the railroad to that traffic signal, is that all like this? Some of the concerns has been this high-level biodect going through, lighting way up in the sky, the, and just the visual disruption of what is this plane now this high biodect going through? How far does the biodect after it crosses the rail line continue approximately? Okay. Why, why such a long throw? Why, why not drop it down fairly quickly and have it down at great level?
That was done purposefully in earlier public outreach that we did to the community. There was a lot of concerns about the visual impact of a structure going over the railroad crossing and what that would mean to people who live in the valley who currently have this view across the valley. They expressed a concern that you'd now have this barrier, this structure right there. So one, one way that we could address those concerns would be to make the structure larger and higher so you can see underneath it. It's not just a barrier right there. If you make it large enough, you suddenly have room underneath to be able to see across the valley. It also allows for farm equipment to get underneath it.
Recognizing that all of this area here
And so I understand one of the reasons, and it's very expensive to leave it in a very was to be able to move farm equipment because they didn't want to have to go across the four-lane road. But that was before the stoplight was put in.
The stoplight would not benefit farm equipment.
But could access to the farm fields be, since it goes down to 52nd and save hundreds of millions, I mean, not hundreds, but
No, not hundreds of millions.
Tens of millions by, by lowering it down because you don't have to create the crossing because you've got a lighted cross at one end of the field instead of the other. We're spending a phenomenal amount of money to keep this raised up, to drive a We're at one end of the field instead of the other. We're spending a phenomenal amount of money to keep this raised up, to drive a tractor under it. At one corner of the field, when at the other corner of the field, just allowing them to be able to use the same traffic signal. We're already putting in to cross over to get up to 52nd, access their field from that way would achieve the same and save. Tens of thousands of dollars, not to mention, you know, putting things up on pierce through there gets a little tricky.
It would save a construction.
Okay.
Yes. What it would not do though is save in right of way costs. You would need to purchase.
Well, yeah.
To be able to make that connection on those sides for access to the fields.
Right now, the signal is a, would be a three-legged intersection.
Does right of way cost more than biodect?
Right of way costs a lot of money, a lot of money.
Post and beam costs a lot of money.
Uh, right now it's a three-legged intersection where the signal is Canyon Road and the access to Chief Lushai School. That is not at grade with the surrounding farm fields. Okay. It's touching down, but the road is elevated. The current road is elevated above the farm fields and the final road is elevated even more above the field. So we would need to purchase additional property. From property owners we have already acquired property from, to do that and do some redesign work. Could it be done? Yes, absolutely. That's something that could be done.
And you've looked into that?
I have not looked at that yet.
Might be worth, I mean, post and being is pretty or peer, being able to lower it sooner. May have some benefits.
Okay.
We recently here did a protection of a historic barn at the, what would be the top of the. Panel over here that we did protection because it basically is right out in the roadway. So do we have to swerve this whole project to the north to go around that historic barn or at least not? Distracted because currently it comes to within about 15 feet of the current roadway.
The barn is currently very close to the current roadway. As it turns out with our current alignment, the new roadway will be further away from the barn than it is now. The problem is the barn is actually in our public right of way. It goes over the line a little bit. And when you have federal money in a, in a project, you have to eliminate all of those encroachments in your right of way. So what we were talking about doing with the barn would be to eliminate that encroachment. Not that we're having to change the design to save the barn. We're actually, the new roadway is going to be further away than the existing one. Not with the intention of saving the barn. It just happened that way, but we need to eliminate that encroachment.
I guess I just see that the barn is closer to the road than say the Pika Farm Stand is. So I don't understand how we're. Encroaching the peak of Farm Stand, but then we miss the barn when we get a few hundred yards. Do we swerve the road over to the north at that point?
It doesn't swerve per se, but the road alignment does vary a little bit. And it's also where you, where you have different lane widenings occurring because you're approaching a signal, right? You're pushing the signal at 52nd and 66th. So we have lanes being added and lanes. For turning at that intersection. So there are impacts to that particular barn that are not the same. As for the Pika Farm Stand. It's a very different locations. Does that help? It might be easier for me to actually. It might be easier if I actually was able to draw it on a piece of paper for you and I'm happy to do that after the meeting if you.
I, I still think it's better that we move through that area to the north, particularly with an elevated roadway. To be able to maintain the economy that we have in that area. I think that's critical and important that we continue to have that opportunity going forward and look for opportunities to make that happen. Sooner than later. On the slide that follows this one here, actually the one that has the. We could bring that up. One of the. Benefits you say are emissions cost savings. We have some nuclear power plants there. What, uh, when we're talking emissions cost savings, what are we talking about in that?
We're talking about air quality. Vehicles idling at signals or idling in gridlock. Produce a lot of emissions and air quality pollutants that are eliminated. When you have traffic flowing smoothly through an area instead. And so one of the elements that the benefit cost analysis looked at were the savings and it's, it's hard to wrap your head around. But the federal government has determined that there is a dollar value. To the air quality reduction in pollutants. I have no idea how they came up with some of these numbers. But they have assigned a dollar value to the reduction in pollutants. And reduction in poor air quality. And so that is one of the numbers that gets plugged into the benefit cost analysis.
Right. I think one of those numbers is people live longer when there's less air pollution.
Could be. Unfortunately, I can't really give a dollar value to our lifespan. I'm not sure how they assign those numbers.
Or less hospital costs due to emphysemas and.
Could be hospital costs, absolutely.
But that is assuming we don't put this in because we have people going around 167, going around 512 and using other corridors. And the idea is that this is a shorter corridor, so they're traveling fewer lane miles, therefore producing less emissions.
And there are fewer signals and choke points. Yes.
So they keep moving.
So they keep moving.
Is there an analysis though to this community that you're cutting through? Obviously, if we're taking all those emissions off here, we're moving them to here. And we're providing all these missions and other toxins that trucks put off and cars break dust, tire and all that. Into our agricultural lands. Is there an analysis of the economic delta for the agricultural lands that we now increase?
There is not a localized analysis like you're talking about. You would be looking at a very specialized group of parcels. And that is not what a benefit cost analysis does. It looks at a larger playing field, a more regional concept. Our, our analysis follows the DOT prescribed requirements for that. But also you look at PSRC's regulations and goals and vision. They're also looking for a regional context. So yes, you may have some negative impacts at a very localized level at this location. But from a regional context, your overall air pollutants in this particular case is reducing.
And so I'm guessing with that, we're not trying to quantify what may be reduced agricultural production due to. Additional toxins or less air quality.
No.
Um, two more quick questions if I may, Chair. The, you had the grid with the Xs on it. You had the tribal ones all Xed all the way through. And you said it wasn't really that, it's, we didn't know because we hadn't talked.
Yes.
Have you talked through all these alternatives with the agricultural?
No. Right. What I did on those was take from our conversations we've had with the agricultural community up to this point. And just apply the logic of impacts. If it reduces the number of property impacts, agricultural property impacts, I view it as a positive. Because that's what I hear from farmers more often than not. Don't affect my property. Don't affect my land. Don't affect my fields, my farms. So if the alternative pulled the project away from them and reduced the property impacts to those agricultural owners. I view that as a positive. It was just a simple logical conclusion.
Surely.
None of them have been discussed with them though.
Okay. And that's through the lens of square footage, square acreage of.
Yes.
Productive farmland.
Yes.
A farm stand where they actually generate the revenue from what they grow on the fields is not considered any higher economic activity than the field itself. So.
Just looking at square footage of property.
Grow one set of crops a year is seen as the same value as the same farm stand that's needed to sell all the crops from the hundreds of acres.
From this analysis perspective, from what I was doing, yes. I'm not an appraiser or I wasn't going to apply a dollar value difference and that type of thing. This is a very simplistic look at the different alternatives and some of the pros and cons.
As someone who grew up in a farming community, uh, having the fields to sit, to grow the crops is important. Having a market to sell it at is more important.
Understood.
And so I would do that. And you did say, my last question, that you did an analysis of two lanes through there.
Yes.
Flat out doesn't work compared to four lanes. Did you do a three lane analysis?
Three lane being what? The center turn line.
Right. Because a lot of times your backups can be people that are waiting to turn into places and.
Our modeling was not looking at backups because of people waiting to turn. Our modeling was just looking at traffic flows through the area. So three lanes wouldn't have improved the situation.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Customer Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ms. Neal, for this. And nice to see you in person and not in a little box. My question is really just kind of understanding what the next steps are as far as the Puyallup Tribe. Because one of my biggest concerns coming to and learning about this project is that we, to cross the river, we need to have some kind of agreement. And where that's going to happen could impact our design. And so just kind of want to understand kind of how that works. As far as the consultation and then coming to some kind of agreement if, if we were to do all of these next steps. Planning requires knowing where the end crossing will be. So just curious if you could kind of elaborate on that.
It definitely does. Uh, we've been in, in conversations with the Puyallup Tribe regarding the, I'm going to call them property rights that we need. We actually don't need property from the tribe. We need an aerial easement to cross over the river. Our current design is a grade separated bridge, which is a large enough structure that our piers are actually outside of the water. So we have no piers in the water in our current design. And so no actual physical touching of tribal property. So we're just looking at an aerial easement to go over the river there, their ownership there. We've been in discussions with them for a couple of years now. We're trying to address their concerns. The tribal communication is actually in two parts. So you have the aerial easement that we need for the actual construction of the bridge. But then, as we would with any project, this one or any other, you have a consultation for the environmental permitting. So there are two avenues of discussions that are underway with the tribe right now. Both of them are still ongoing and will continue to be ongoing until we either resolve an aerial easement. And/or we have the permits finalized. But the tribe is actively engaged with us. They've been actively engaged in the project for many years now. As I mentioned, we do have a letter from the tribe. That definitely expresses their desire to have the Millroy Bridge removed for a variety of reasons. One of which is environmental pollution, impacts to their fishing rights, that type of thing. And so we're, we're continuing those conversations. I really can't get into the details of those because it is ongoing negotiations, but you're absolutely right. If we are to change our direction now. To do any one of those alternatives that were listed or something else entirely that would. Both change the location of the bridge and also change the other elements of the project. That's going to change the aerial easement that we need and the consultation for environmental permitting. So if we're going to make that change, it, it is important that we get that settled very quickly so that we can go ahead and change the conversation with the tribe. To be addressing exactly what it is that we're doing.
Okay. And then as far as the comfort, I guess with the tribe, as far as where the original plan is, do we have? Are they comfortable with where the original plan had, had us crossing with the type of design that you described?
They didn't have, to, to my knowledge, with conversations I've been a part of and have heard, there was no. Issue with the location itself. The location makes sense for a lot of different reasons. Their concerns were other factors dealing with fishing rights and access to the school, those types of things.
Okay. And then third question, if I may, Chair. Um, the modeling that you were doing, was it based on 167 being completed? As part of the modeling when you were looking at that? Okay.
Yes, we've been working with Washstop for a number of years to make sure that our traffic modeling reflects the traffic that they're expecting. With the 167 completion and that their traffic modeling reflects the traffic that we're expecting with the completion of Canyon Road. So that our numbers match and there isn't some weird disconnect later on. So we're, we're both anticipating that each other's projects will be complete as we're doing these models of 10 and 20 years from now.
Okay. Thank you. And I have some random policy wonderings that I can bring up another day when we have more time. Just went through my brain. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those questions. Customer room.
Commissioner, not to belabor kind of what we're going, but I appreciate the amount of work that went into this.
You're welcome.
I think a, as a council. It's always nice to make sure we're headed in the right direction. Since this has been going on for lord knows 30 years or so, building this corridor out. Just a couple of questions. Uh, one of the largest. Landowners down there along, what is that, 54th, 50?
52nd?
52nd is Storino Farms. Okay. I know this council. In, in the past has put together agreements with Storino Farms. To update some of the issues that they had on their existing. Property with their structures and their other amenities on this property. Within those agreements, was there anything mentioned about? The property as far as having the. Extension go through a portion of their property?
Going off of memory, I believe the agreement acknowledges that the Canyon Road project will be going along 52nd. Fronting their property and also specifies the number of driveways that they will be having. And the locations of those with the completion of the project, but does not address any other aspects. They needed to remain separate things because of the federal money that we have accepted for the project.
Okay, but they're, they're obviously aware.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Just from my understanding from the cost benefit analysis. If. All those farms were to go away. And the land would go fallow. What would be the economic impact of that area versus? What we're attempting to serve in the Frederick scenario?
I am not the right person to ask that question of. I'm not an economist. I don't have that information available. I can speculate only that. There would certainly be a, not only a dollar value, but also a. I'm going to say a quality of life reduction. I mean, the farming community is, is so important to the areas and, and the surrounding. Uh, populace. It's, it has an intangible value beyond the dollars that it produces. But I'm not an economist and I don't have those numbers. I'm sorry.
Okay. And I don't mean to put you in a box to be able to do that. I'm just trying to figure out if. Agriculture is only less than 1% of Pierce County's. Ink, you know, economic income, where does that put this property? And, you know, looking at the larger picture of. The amount of dollars that are generated due to. The success of this core corridor. I'm just, you know, looking at, okay. Mitigating as many of the impacts as we can. I, I understand that. And just trying to get a handle on the, you know, cost benefit analysis pertaining to. Kind of why we've come to a screeching halt here, quote unquote. And what we're really trying to evaluate here.
I'll go back through the, I'll go back through the cost benefit analysis. I'll go back through the, I'll go back through the cost benefit analysis, looking specifically for information about the agricultural community. Um, if I find something that appears to be relevant to your question, I will, I will forward it through Mr. Taylor.
Okay, okay. That's all the questions I have. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. As my colleague said, Ms. Neal, you, you and the team have been working on this, uh, for a long time. And, and even the existing, um, uh, project is providing benefit to Pierce County. It's not, it's, it's actively providing benefit to, to Pierce County. So congratulations, we have to do this in phases because of the, 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 the cost and, um, all of it. So thank you for that. It, this last, um, phase is extra complicated. And, uh, and extra expensive in my mind. So, um, this has been a really good update for the council and the community. Thank you for, um, suggesting we get i- an update at this, uh, milestone and, and what's in front of us. Because of, uh, the cost and several outstanding questions, I'm going to continue to have a lot of concern about the strategy going forward and appreciate you. Um, as have, as previous folks have said, it's important we, we do get on the same page because uh, i- it's important and there's so many different, um, decisions that are dependent upon each other. So I, I do want to, um, make sure, uh, Mr. Winesbury, if you could help us take, take us to slide nineteen of Ms. Neal's presentation, the financial strategy slide. Want to make sure we understand wh- what's on here before we leave each other today. On slide nineteen, one of the, I, I think what we're trying to convey here is we've fully funded design and, and right of way ac- acquisition. And that's, um, been about fifty, fifty-three million dollars to date. And, um, is this suggesting that to do everything in, in red and yellow, um, it's going to be another two hundred seventy-five million dollars to complete?
No.
Can you clarify?
Um, suggesting that to do the Canyon Road Regional Connection Project, the river crossing and the river crossing only. Constructing.
Thank you. We're visual learners.
Constructing this piece basically from Pioneer Way to Seventy-Eighth Avenue five.
Will cost between, yeah, two fifty-six and two eighty-five are the, the range of, of costs that we're looking at from construction right now. So
In today's numbers.
In today's numbers, yes. And what's in that pie chart and what's listed there is a strategy. There's a lot of different ways you can pay for something. So this is simply one of many, many ways that you could put all these pieces together to come up with that money.
And it'll change as the world turns?
Definitely change, yes.
Wha- what is, it, what is trying to be inferred in this, in this strategy? What, what is being inferred by the hundred million dollars for legislative appropriations?
Simply that, um, there are opportunities over each legislative cycle to have appropriations direct from the state and federal government to a project, rather than going through a grant, um, competitive process. I'm sure it is competitive at the legislature arguing in back rooms who gets what, but it's not an application process we go through. We simply work with our Congress, um, people and our legislators to say this is a project that we as a county think is really important and we would really like an appropriation of X amount of dollars.
Thank you. Um, thank you for clarifying that. Uh, one, my, I have lots of concerns about this final leg of the project. I, and I've expressed this before, it's no surprise. Uh, I'm, I am very much convinced the Millroy Bridge must be replaced. That is, um, not lost on me at all. I used to live, I used to work around, felt like I lived there. I was there every day. I used to work around the corner. I, I am very certain the Bill Roy Bridge must be replaced. I am very concerned at, at the, the cost of the project. But, uh, I remain, you know, that I don't see that happening anytime soon. We've, we, we've heard the leadership of especially our state legislature about this project. And while asked numerous times over the last decade, each time they've said no. It's not because you're not doing a good job, Ms. Neal, it's just, I don't see that as a, I, I don't see that as a viable strategy. And I guess when I continue to look at all the other major transportation needs, ferry replacements, Fox Island Bridge, I five Nisqually Bridge, finish, finally finishing one sixty-seven, hundred twenty-second, and the, the list goes on and on and on. You, you know this well. We have a lot of need throughout the county that, of other mega projects, not to mention the smaller projects that, that people are expecting in nooks and crannies throughout, throughout the county. Um, I, I get, I get worried about these assumptions about over forty million dollars of bonding. Once we bond for this project, as an example, we're, 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 we, we don't have as much capacity to bond for, there's only so much money that, that, that service needs to get repaid. That means we probably can't bond to replace ferries or bond to replace the Fox Island Bridge or the count, countless other projects. This is a lot of money and a lot that is requiring local funds. And so, um, we're not at a, at a decision point today, but I am continuing to signal that I don't know if we can afford this. And I don't know that we can afford, with all the other needs we have throughout the county, I don't know that this is our top, our top priority to finish it as, as currently proposed. And I just, I, it's, it's important that we be in sync with each other and, and communicate like you are causing. And so thank you for doing the responsible thing and causing it. But what you've done to date is, is generating benefit for the county. That project is, that, that, that work is not lost on us. Um, and there's other major investments that are coming to support freight and freight mobility. Like one sixty-seven is, is happening, thank goodness. That is going to significantly support freight mobility in Pierce County. We just got a presentation about, two, three weeks ago, about major investments on five twelve and other major investments in, uh, central and south county. So there, there are in- investments happening, but from a local perspective, what, what we need to come up with of local dollars with all of our other needs. I'm, I'm very concerned and don't know that I would put all of that, that money there at the expense, at the expense of other projects and needs around the county. I'll stop there. Um, it, so no one can say I didn't express my concern early and that we get too far in front of each other. Customer Monroe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You bring up some good concerns and I appreciate that. I- in this, going back to slide nineteen, how much of that cost is just the Millroy Bridge?
That's a very hard question to answer because it depends on what you're replacing. We're talking about replacing a two-lane at-grade bridge with a four-lane grade separated structure. So the dollar value of the bridge is going to be significantly higher than, say, alternative one that I was showing you where you replace the Millroy Bridge and its location with its essentially the same configuration. So you have a very different dollar, um, going on there. In our design, this larger structure at Seventieth Avenue, grade separated, just the structure itself is almost a hundred million dollars.
So substantial amount.
It's a substantial amount of money. Bridges are not cheap.
In, in alternate number one, what would we be looking at? Just so I can have a kind of a broad spectrum here. Are we talking half? Are we talking three quarters?
It would be significantly less. I hesitate to say because I don't even know if we could get it permitted. We're talking about peers in the water. That's a whole nother ball of wax to have to go through. I am not a hundred percent sure we could even permit that. If that ends up being the direction that council decides that we go in, we will be pursuing that diligently. But right now, I haven't had those conversations with the permitting and regulatory agencies. If it's not permissible, there isn't amount of money that I can put at it that would make it doable. Structure wise, just a structure of that type, you're looking at something a quarter of the cost of what we've designed. You're looking at something in that ballpark. It's significantly less money. But something with peers in the water starts to become problematic to even be able to build.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you. Um, in, in closing, um, we do have a one thirty Public Safety Committee meeting. I- in closing, Mr. Taylor, can you remind us the work to come that council called for last year as part of updating the comprehensive plan? Can you remind us where that work is and when council should anticipate that body of work?
Uh, thank you. So the, as you note, the council adopted a resolution R twenty twenty-two one forty-four uh, last fall. That resolution calls for, uh, asked for a number of items of information that is to come back to the council. Uh, Ms. Neal touched on some of those items today. For instance, the, um, alternatives that were, uh, covered today, the, the five different alternatives related to the, the bridge design is one of those items of information, but there's an economic analysis. There's a cost benefit analysis. There's information sought regarding, uh, travel time impacts. All of that information is due to be reported back by the department, um, by October of this year. Ms. Neal, uh, referenced that earlier. That information is currently queued up for a conversation at the Economic Infrastructure Development Committee in October. So I would, just as a note, I would characterize today's conversation as, as an update, right? It's information as known today. Some of this information is still in development. Think there'll be a much more involved conversation once the response to that resolution is provided by the department.
Thank you. Again, there's lots here, so I appreciate council getting an, an update along the way. We're not trying to deal with it all in just one opportunity. It's a big, expensive, big, important decision. I'm not seeing any other business in front of the, uh, Pierce County Council and Monday study session. Thank you again to the department for the briefing and the update and the very hard work. Signal other business, we are adjourned.